Good evening. It's 6 o'clock. This is the Wabash City School Board of Trustees meeting for Monday, February 17th, 2025. Roll call.
Everyone is present.
Having a quorum, we'll call the meeting to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wabash City Schools provides a relevant and rigorous education founded upon relationships to ensure each student is college and career ready for success in a global community. Welcome. We have a revision tonight. We need to approve revision 3K. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
All those in favor of approving the revision say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on an agenda item? Okay, the consent agenda. We have minutes of February 3rd, 2025. Some claims, no donations. And for financials tonight, we have the revenue and expense update and an appropriations report. I'll accept a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, for our financials tonight, we will start with the January revenue and expense report. You can see that our revenue was just a little bit lower than what we had projected. This was mainly due to lower grant reimbursements such as Title I, Title II, as well as our reimbursements for cafeteria fund. Our accounts payable was higher than projected. However, want to remind you that the reason behind that was because we paid the debt payment in January that should have been paid in December. So that's why that is so high. And then our salary expenses were a little bit lower than projected. And just a reminder, January of this year was a three-pay month, whereas last year it was not a three-pay month. So we were projected to have a net income of about eighteen, eighteen and a half thousand dollars, but we ended up with a net loss of close to five hundred thousand. However, when you factor in that debt payment that was made, our actual net loss would have been about negative seventeen thousand. So considering all things, knowing that that was a three-pay month, I feel pretty good about the start of our fiscal year. Moving to the key fund balances, our ed fund still sits just a little over 1.5 million. Operations is at minus six hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars. This balance does include our tax anticipation warrant that we received for this year. That was three hundred thousand dollars. Reminder, last year, our tax anticipation warrant was four hundred thousand, so we did drop that a bit. Rainy day is at four hundred and two thousand, but we will see that starting to drop. We did make our first payment for the Heartland Roof Project, and we are also using this for transportation salaries and maintenance and repair expenses. So over the next couple of months, we'll see that starting to drop a little. The total of our key fund balance sits just a little over 1.2 million. Any questions on those? Okay, the next thing we will look at is our appropriations report. And we start a new year with our report. If I can get this to screen. Since we've had one month of expenses or appropriations, we're looking at our target of about 8.3%. So you can see for our ed fund, our revenue, we collected 8.1%. So we're a little bit behind in our revenue for our ed fund. Many of these, the ones that are shaded in orange, are the ones that are over the 8.3%, but most of those are due in part because we had a three-pay month. So we started off the year having to pay, you know, more than two payments for salaries, all those expenses. So over the next couple of months, we'll see that start to balance out. As the total fund, we're at 9.5%. So just a little bit over. And like I said, knowing we had a three-pay month, I feel pretty good about that. When we look at our operations, it shows that we have collected 12.9%. Remember, that includes 300,000. That's our tax anticipation warrant. And then we have a few items, again, that are above. The first one, the area vocational school, that in January, we pay some CPF payments that we pay at the beginning of the year for them that are only paid one time. So again, that's one that will balance out. A lot of these have to do with the three-pay salary as well. So altogether, we're at about 13%, so a little bit higher than where we want to be. So hopefully, in the next couple of months, we'll see that start to come down and be closer to what our appropriations. Any questions?
Okay, trying to get back up just a minute. Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. H, item H. The next regular scheduled board meeting will be Monday, March 3rd, 2025, at Wabash High School in the WMS Cafeteria. There's some items of communication. New business. Board will learn about Wabash City School's student participation and success at Heartland Career Center.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good. How are you?
Good. For any practice brochure with Heartland, it basically gives you all information for our programs. And so if you have questions, you can kind of look at this to get a good brief understanding of what is offered. And on this next slide, it'll actually, we'll show you what we offer. We offer 17 different programs that all of your students are able to be involved in and participate. And one of those other, the one at the very end there is CDL. Okay, CDL is something we offer to our second-year students in our transportation services programs, which is auto service, auto collision, diesel service. We also offer to our precision ag and our furnishing classes. This year, we have 12 students in there, and three of those are Wabash students. That funding comes from the Perkins funding, and so that costs $5,000 a student. Those students pay $700, and then the rest is covered by the Perkins fund. And so they really get a good deal on that and set them up after high school. We do a lot of great things in our programs. Every single program we have offers some type of dual credit or certifications or licenses. And those are some of the things that we'll talk about on the next couple of slides. So this is overall what Heartland has offered, all of our students and all of our school corporations. So if you look at that, you can see the differences in each years between certifications and licenses, how many we've had from 21 all the way through 24 this last year. And you kind of see a dip from last year to this year. The state made some changes on different certifications and licenses that were available and recognized. So we had to adjust and kind of pull back on us a little bit. And so you can see the difference. But if you look, you know, we've served 341 students that got those certifications. We mainly focus on our second-year students for that. We want them leaving us with some type of certification or license to begin in the workforce or go on post-secondary education. So the next slide is actually Wabash students. And so you can see there, this, excuse me, last year, we had 78 students earn certifications or licenses. The year four was 90. Okay, so a little drop in the number of students participating. But the total certifications, licenses, 160 this last year. 157 of those, three of those are licenses. Usually, those licenses are in our cosmetology class. Okay? And so that doesn't include your students in CDL. All right? And then we have the state-recognized, you see in the recognized certifications, there's 81 of the 157. And so we do offer a lot of certifications. Some of that funding is through the Perkins funds, so that's not something you're paying for, it's through the Perkins funding. And then the rest of it goes through state reimbursements. If anything is recognized by the state, they reimburse us. Or that actually goes to you guys, and then we ask for it back so we can cover the costs. Internships. Internships is a big thing right now. If you all know the new diplomas coming out, it's been a big thing about work-based learning. And we do a large part of that with our students. And as you can see here, we have 182 students last year that were in our work-based learning opportunity. Of that, 153 were in work-based learning opportunities were over 75 hours. And that's big, because on the enrollment side of the new diploma, it's 75 to get that hours plus seal. In the employment side, that first seal, it's going to be 150 hours. So we've got to work to get there. Each of those internships have to be at least a minimum of 25 hours at one location. And so if they're not 25 hours, we can't count that towards that work-based learning. They do also keep track of how many are paid, and that's something new. And so of those, excuse me, of those 182 internships, we had 101 paid out. And so a lot of those kids love that opportunity. They love to go to work when they can during school. Most of them really want the afternoon because they can work from noon until 5:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night, so they can get extra hours. We have to track all those hours for the state. We also have to track, you know, where it's at. And so when we turn that in, that's data that we have to have from the state for federal that goes into enters and gets reported back to us, and we get evaluated on that. There's several other areas we get evaluated on, but this is one of the big ones. And this is really going to be a big piece of this new diploma. And so we're going to have to really work on expanding that. As you can see, the employer sites, we're at 115 different sites. That's a lot within our community. We also have some over Miami County as well, so it's a part of that. So we have a lot of businesses that help us out, and we appreciate that. And we're excited to continue that and grow that, those internships. Next is the Wabash kids. So you see there, we had 36 students last year in internships, 19 different sites, 29 of the 36 earned 75-plus hours. Okay? And 11 of those students were paid. So, next slide, please. College credits. Obviously, we talked about dual credits earlier. So these are the number of dual credits we've been able to offer the last few years. You can see that last year was over 5,000 dual credits with our students, with 479 students. We try to offer dual credit first year and second year for every program. One of the things we get evaluated on is if there's a nine credits available within a pathway. And so if you have auto service, are there nine credits lined up with Vincennes or Ivy Tech? And how many of those students earn those credits? So we get evaluated on that through that process. That's part of the interest data that we have to go through, just like the internships. So we try to make sure every program has a minimum of nine. We have some that have 15 credits they can earn in one pathway. Health science is one of those. And so any opportunity we could get kids signed up to get dual credit, we do it. Not every kid's going to use it, but we want them to know that's there for them so that three or four years after high school, you know what, I really want to go do this, it's still available for them. And then here's the Wabash students. Last year, they earned over 1,000 credits, dual credits. 117 students earned those credits. And you can see the breakdown between Vincennes and Ivy Tech. Vincennes is a big partner for us and a few of our programs. Ivy Tech is a bigger one. I mean, Ivy Tech's big for the state. And so you can see the difference there with 334 and then 694 and a half credits for our students. And it looks to an average earning or savings of two, over $200,000 for students. And those are just your students at Wabash. Okay? You know, we're trying to do a lot of different things. We're always looking to add. As you know, we are getting a new roof, finally, this spring, and we're excited for that. And we want to thank you guys for that, because you guys are a big part of that. But we have a lot of things in the future that we need to do. It would be great to be able to expand, but I understand application money's tight. We're trying to do what we can in-house, and we have some things that we can kind of move around. We could be offering new programs in the future. And if you, as a board, are interested in certain programs and adding programs, let us know, and we'll see what we can do to offer those. We'll go through our general advisory committee, talk to them about it in the process, and see what the other students want to do. So we're always willing to grow and get better, and we're here for you, you know, to service your students. So if you have any questions, let me know. Like I said, we offer a lot within our programs, and we're excited to do that. I think we have a great staff. They do a great job out there with our students. I believe for the most part, almost all of our staff is out there for these kids and to provide them opportunities to get better. So, any questions?
You said that the CDL costs five grand, and 700 of that is out of the student's pocket? Or is, okay, and so, like, how is that typically, like, how do they have to pay that? Is that, like, over payments, or is that a lump sum?
Yeah, we work with that. And so what we do, so we have to go through an application process. So students apply for the CDL program. So for example, this year, we started out with 20 students who were interested. We really thought we might be at 16 students total, but through this process, kids kind of took themselves out. We had several kids that said, you know, I'm not really interested in it. And we really tried to push them because we felt like this is a good opportunity for them. But we got down to 12. And through that process, we start that back in October, and then we end up having a meeting in November to let everybody know what's going on. And then we break down that. And then by, I think, December 1, we end up deciding what students qualify. Of course, of the 12, pretty much all of them qualified anyway. And so then they have payments. They have to make two different payments at least. But we try to get all that money before we start March 1st.
How long does it take to achieve a CDL license?
So if you were not at Heartland Career Center and needed an adult program, it's 14 to 17 weeks. And that is six days a week. And they're going, coming in at 8:00 and leaving at 5:00. They get an hour for once. If they're at Heartland, we start March 1. We do roughly two to three weeks in the classroom, and then we go out and drive for the rest of the time. And they're usually done the first week of May, and that second week, they go through and down to Indianapolis and do CDL testing. And so roughly two and a half months.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Report.
I would love to invite you guys out anytime you want. If you want to come out and visit, please let us know. We'll take you on tours. You can come out anytime. Just give us a call. Okay?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. You too. Board to approve a 2.25 raise, $2.25 raise for the middle school, high school evening custodians. Dave Williams, Doug Harlan, and Stacy Gibson, in lieu of hiring additional custodians for the building.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
So over the past year, probably longer, the middle school, high school has been running with three and a half evening custodians when they should have five. These three gentlemen have done a tremendous job keeping the building in tip-top shape. So, and compared to the other buildings, they have the largest square footage to take care of, and they also have the most events to set up for and then to clean up after. So in lieu of hiring another custodian, we'd like to raise their pay by $2.25, and this is in our operations budget.
Questions from the board? All those in favor of approving the raise say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Board to approve the following resignations. One, Lisa Gibson as a custodian at WMS/WHS effective February 2nd, 2025, and Donna Patty Ballard as Wabash High School art teacher effective February 21st, 2025.
So moved.
Discussion.
So Ms. Gibson is the halftime custodian, so we're going to have to hire, replace that. But we just want to thank both Ms. Gibson and Mrs. Ballard for their time in service to Wabash City Schools.
All those in favor of approving the resignation say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Board to accept the request for the annual sixth-grade Chicago trip, May 9th, 2025. The entire class will travel by bus to Chicago, Illinois, leaving Wabash at 7:00 a.m. and returning at approximately 9:30 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So this is the annual sixth-grade trip. The students do fundraisers. PTO also helps. They go by charter bus, so they're not using a Wabash City Schools bus. And because they're going out of state, the board has to approve this request.
All those in favor of approving the trip say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Board to accept the request of fifth-grade students traveling to Camp Crossley, Webster, Indiana for an overnight camp experience on May 19th through May 20th, 2025.
So, second.
Discussion.
So this is our annual fifth-grade camping trip, and because it's an overnight trip, it's not out of state, but it is overnight. So we have to get board approval for that.
All those in favor of approving the trip say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Board to approve the demotion of Amanda Edman as event coordinator effective February 7th, 2025. This results in a pay reduction of $1.45 per hour. This position is not being filled at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mrs. Harold and Mrs. Honeycutt will be covering the responsibilities of the event coordinator, so backfilling for the position is not necessary.
Question about that. So when Ms. Honeycutt, Mrs. Honeycutt retires, how is that going to, are we going to reevaluate that?
I assume Mrs. Harold will need to at that time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Board to approve the demotion of Tina King as head cook at WMS effective February 7th, 2025. This results in a pay reduction of $1.65 per hour. The position is not being filled at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So again, Ms. Harold and Mrs. Honeycutt will be covering these responsibilities, so we do not need to backfill at this time. When Mrs. Honeycutt's not here, this is one most likely that will definitely need to be refilled.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Board to approve a retirement notification incentive of $5,000 paid into the VAALIC account for any certified employee that meets the state's retirements and turns in a letter of intent at the end of the 2425 school year by March 10, 2025. The incentive will be paid from the VAALIC forfeiture account. This will be offered to the first five individuals that submit their intent to retire.
Second.
Discussion.
So as we begin looking at next year, we need to start looking at what areas we will potentially have openings. Having an understanding of who is returning is critical. So this incentive will be provided to help us get an early idea of who will not be returning. Again, it's for certified employees. They must meet the state's retirement, and there's three different, three different categories. It's the rule of 85. So if you're 55 and you have 30 years of experience, if you're 65 or 60 and have 15 years, or 65 and have 10 years. So there's different levels. I believe we have nine that qualify. So they must submit the letter by March 10. And then at that point, it is, they cannot retract it, and they would get $5,000 into their VAALIC account. We currently have over $100,000 in our forfeiture account. So that money is in there. Anytime a teacher leaves without being vested, that money rolls into that forfeiture account. So we can use it for these types of things. We used it during negotiations to provide additional into their VAALIC account this year.
Questions from the board? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. The board will be reminded of changes to iRead this year and their impact to students and families.
So this is an abbreviated presentation of what I shared earlier in the year. And the reason why I'm sharing this now is because iRead does begin on March 3. So it is coming quickly. Just a reminder of what iRead, it's designed to measure foundational reading skills based on the Indiana academic standards through grades three. All of our grade three students in Indiana must participate in and attain a passing score. It's administered in the spring, and then we also administer it again in the summer. In 2024, we piloted second grade, and starting this year, it is mandatory for second graders. One thing to remember, because it's testing standards that are taught in third grade, we don't expect all second graders to pass that. Some of them will. We had a very large number that passed it last year, which is great. But it gives us a nice data point as they enter into third grade when it gets a little more, there's more, I don't know what word I'm looking for.
Data points for them to know where they are.
Yeah, but taking the test, it's a little more high stakes as a third grader now. So there, students can qualify for a good cause exemption. In the past, if they were English learners, if they were students with disabilities, or if they had already been retained twice, if they didn't pass in third grade, we were able to go ahead and move them on. So the results for, over the last three years, these are the 2024 results. You can see that we had 92 students that were tested, 71 passed. So we had a pass rate of 77.2. Of the 92 students, we had eight that qualified for a good cause exemption. So when you move them on, our final passing rate is 84.5. When we look at state averages for public and non-public, we do compare those to the 77.2 because for the state averages, we would not have the good cause exemptions in there. So we are a little bit lower. That was part of the reason we entered into the literacy cadre. We have our literacy coach now, who's really working with our teachers on how to teach literacy instruction. Our second-grade students that took it last year, we had 109 that tested, 56 passed it, passed. So we had a pass rate of 51. Those students that passed last year as second grade do not have to retest as a third grader. So the changes that they've made this year for iRead is, again, all students beginning in second grade will take it. If they do not pass, they have to continue taking it through grade, through the sixth-grade summer administration or until they pass. So if they take it in second grade, they don't pass. If they take it in third grade and pass, they're done. If they don't, they continue to take it until they are able to pass or until the summer after their sixth-grade year. Senate Enrolled Act I requires third-grade students to be retained if they do not pass iRead after multiple test administration opportunities. So that is the spring and the summer. So our third graders this year that are taking it, they will need to go to summer school, and then they will retest. And if they don't pass it, they will be third graders again next year.
Now, that's in every school across the state of Indiana?
Yes. Yes. They've also changed good cause exemptions. They still have the special ed exemption. That's part of a case conference decision, case conference decision to decide, is it appropriate to move this student on? Same thing with the English learner. If they're an EL learner who has received services for fewer than two years, then the individual learning plan committee can determine to promote them to the next grade. Some changes to the good cause exemptions, they have a math exceptionality. So if a third-grade student does not pass iRead, but they pass Math I-Learn, they can go on. I have no idea the reasoning behind that, but, yeah. If they've been retained twice and they've received intensive intervention, which all of our students would if they had been retained twice, they also can be moved on. And then if a third-grade student does not pass, they take it in the summer, and they do not pass, and they have to be retained. When they take it that second time in the spring, so their second time in third grade, if they don't pass, we're allowed to move them on. We will still be providing remediation. They'll still be expected to go to summer school and continue to take the test, but they're not going to just stay in third grade until they do pass. Another change is summer school for non-passers. So SEA, Senate Enrolled Act Number One, requires us to offer summer school for second-grade students who are identified at at-risk. There are three different categories. They pass, they're on track, or they're at risk. So if they're in that at-risk, we have to provide summer school for second graders as well as our non-passing third-grade students. And if a student does not attend or attend at least 90% of the summer reading program, we have to put together an individual reading plan. I'm assuming the state's going to give us information on that. I have not seen anything on it. So if they don't pass during that summer retest, they're going to have, that's for second-grade students. They'll have to have an individual reading plan. And again, third-grade students have to be retained if they do not pass after that summer session. That is just something I think we need to get out there. Parents are going to question, why is my third grader being retained? This is part of a state law, and it's happening in all schools across our state. So like I said, with iRead coming up very soon, we wanted to get this out. I'm going to work on putting this together as a video and sharing it with our second, third-grade families in Parent Square. Any questions?
With the students having to be in, like, summer school reading programs and remediation and all that, did we look at that in the budget for the summer?
We have already, we've always offered the third-grade iRead. We added a little bit to our second. The nice thing is, we will get reimbursed from the state. So that is one, I know that the state has talked about changing the way they fund summer school and making sure that schools have the money to be able to offer the reading intervention in the summer as one of their, yeah, top priorities.
Cool. Thank you.
So just so that people understand, since this is statewide and your student doesn't So just so that people understand, since this is statewide, and your student doesn't, at Wabash City Schools, doesn't pass the iRead in third grade, you can't transfer to another school and go on to fourth grade. You still have to make up third, third grade at the other school you would transfer to.
Correct.
So there's just no getting around it.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Board to approve FMLA leave request for employee number 3080 from February 17th to March 10, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
I recommend the board approve this FMLA leave request.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Items from superintendent?
Saturday was National SRO Day, so I want to give a shout-out to Officer Sam Hipskin. He goes above and beyond to keep our students and staff of Wabash City Schools safe, so he's greatly appreciated. Want to say good luck to our men's swimming team sectional this week. I also would like to congratulate Corbin Goshert and Adrian Hawn. They both wrestled at the Fort Wayne Semi-State last weekend. And I don't know about you, but I'm ready for winter to be over. As of today, we have utilized four e-learning days. We were granted four additional e-learning days through our 1003 flexibility waiver that we applied for. So we still have three days available. However, if we go beyond that, we will need to look at possibly adding days into, onto the end of the school year. Hopefully, we don't have to get to that point. I think after Wednesday, when I typed this, our temperatures were supposed to increase. I think that's been pushed out. Maybe it's not until Friday. There's no significant snow in the forecast, so hopefully, it stays that way. And I do want to remind families that when decisions are made to close school and go to e-learning, this is made with student safety as our top priority.
Can we use as many e-learning days in a row as we want to, or do you, can you only use, like, two, and then you have to have it in a makeup day, and then?
You can do as many in a row. I prefer not to have more than two. So.
Items from Chief Operations Officer?
Well, let's all say our prayers for Chad for the next week with the cold, because he's done a great job keeping our boilers running. And so we're hoping there's only about six more weeks left if we have to deal with that, but it sounds like this one will be tough. But the only other thing I have is, you know, in two, two weeks, three weeks, we will host the boys' basketball sectional in Coleman Gymnasium. It is the first time in 90 years that we're going to host a boys' basketball sectional in our own facility. We hosted at Honeywell Center for 20 years, back in the 30s and 40s. But this will be the first time we've held it in our own gym since 1935. So this is why we expanded Coleman. This is why we fixed the gym, right, so we can have these opportunities. And so I'd encourage everybody to come out if you can. It's the first week of March, and it'll be the first time that the boys' basketball sectional's been here in 90 years. So, go Batches.
Items from administrators? Okay. Items from board members? We'll start. Kristen? Jason?
Just keep, first of all, Mr. Hitchens, he's awesome. Really appreciate all he does for our school district. He's, he's top-notch. Also, just keeping our school board liaison and Mrs. Dillon and our thoughts and prayers as her son is going through some major stuff tomorrow. And so it's just weighing on me tonight, and so if you can just keep them in your prayer.
I have nothing.
Yes, support for Andrew, for sure. And congratulations to Mr. Stone and for the girls who made top-notch.
Yeah, Mrs. Dillon is one of our secretaries. What is she the secretary of now?
She's an attendant.
Yeah, attendant secretary. And then Andrew graduated, what, how many years ago?
Yeah.
23. So, yes, we'll all be grateful to them. I don't have anything either, so with that, we'll adjourn. Thank you.